Good evening. I'd like to call the May 20, 2019 meeting of the University Heights City Council. Or Mrs. Thomas, will you call the roll?
Mr. Rock?
Here.
Mr. Weisman?
Here.
Mr. Sims? Mrs. Pardee? Mr. Erdl?
Here.
Mrs. Cameron? Present. Mrs. Wise? Here.
Is there a motion to excuse Mrs. Pardee and Mr. Sims?
Second.
Second.
Okay, motion by Mrs. Cameron, second by Mr. Weisman. Mrs. Thomas, will you call the roll?
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Weisman?
Aye.
Mr. Erdl?
Aye.
Mrs. Cameron? Aye. Mrs. Wise? Aye.
All those who are able, please rise with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common. Next item on the agenda is the approval of minutes. We have a set of minutes from our May 6, 2019 meeting. Is there a motion? Motion by Mr. Erdl, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Rock, is there any discussion? Mrs. Thomas, will you call the roll?
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Weisman?
Aye.
Mr. Erdl?
Aye.
Mrs. Cameron? Aye. Mrs. Wise? Aye.
Minutes are approved. Uh, next, our comments from the audience. Speakers are limited to five minutes. Total time allotted, fifteen minutes per meeting. If anyone here would like to address the city this evening, please come on up to the podium, speak into the microphones, state your name, and address for the venue. Thank you very much.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council, and all residents. My entire life has been spent listening. Name, Barbara Leinfeld, I know you know me, sorry. Two five eight eight Saber Road. My entire life has been spent listening, learning, planning, and executing, and that experience has prepared me to lead through listening. I realize most residents can't attend every council meeting or committee meeting, and my style is to engage whenever I can, hear concerns, and ensure they are front and center in all phases of the civic process. I'm excited today to announce my candidacy for city council in the November election. It is my desire to be a voice of community. As an experienced manager and planner, over the years, I have worked in the legal field, healthcare, finance, and operations, having previously served as clerk of council for the city of Beachwood and paralegal to that city's law director, and coordinator for the Cleveland Clinic Wellness Institute from its inception. My career experiences are valuable, relevant, and readily transferable to the skills necessary to serve this community as a member of council. As you know, I've been delighted to actively contribute to the community through volunteer service, including the University Heights Finance Advisory Committee, the committee involved in the rebranding process, and each year with Memorial Day Parade and Commemoration Committee, which in addition to helping coordinate parade participants in family-friendly activities, I'm proud to help facilitate the annual flyover by the United States Air Force F-15 jets. And yes, thanks to my contacts with the Cleveland EPA and the Pentagon who coordinate this, I'm told that we should expect to have them again this year. I love my hometown, University Heights. My husband Harvey and I only looked in University Heights when we were looking for a new place to call home. Beyond the beautiful architecture, nothing cookie cutter about this town. The choice was based on the strong sense of genuine community. From the start, we jumped in with both feet to add our talents and our voices to growing that spirit. We attend every council meeting, have enjoyed serving on committees, and we were delighted to receive a 2018 Beautiful Home Award, but more so, we're honored to be the recipients of the University Heights 2019 Volunteers Award. This is an administration that is moving our city in a new and exciting direction, directions that we deserve to be headed, just like our neighboring cities, while remaining solid and sustainable. It is an administration that is honest, and open, and friendly, and that works very hard every single day to serve its residents. I very much want to be a part of keeping that momentum going and growing for the benefit of my community. I know I have your support, and I plan on walking all the borough streets this summer and working hard between now and election day to gain the support of my neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Thomas. Is there anyone else this evening who would care to address the city? There is no one else, we will move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the reports and communications from the mayor and taking action. Perhaps the most significant thing I have to report is in regard to the Heights Hill Crest, Heights Hill Crest Communications Center Board of Trustees. The board oversees the operations of our regional dispatch center, which dispatches police, fire, and EMS, calls for University Heights, or Cleveland Heights, or Shaker Heights, South England, and Richmond Heights. We elected new officers last week, and I now have the honor of serving as chair of the Heights Hill Crest Communications Center Board of Trustees. I'm delighted to be working with Vice Chair and Richmond Heights Mayor, David Roach, Treasurer and Cleveland Heights City Manager, Tanisha Riley, Secretary and Shaker Heights Mayor, David Lutz. My sincere thanks to Tanisha Riley as both the outgoing chair and the first chair of the board as our regional dispatch center got off the ground here. Also, I thank William Bruber, the Shaker Heights Law Director, for his ongoing work serving the board. A year and a half into operations, we are still making adjustments and improvements to better serve the community. I look forward to working with Director Nick Paseco and all of the police chiefs and fire chiefs in the community served by our dispatch center to improve dispatch safety services throughout the Heights Hill Crest communities. We are still seeking volunteers to serve on this year's Beautiful Homes Awards Committee overseen by the University Heights Beautiful Homes, or rather, City Beautiful, CIC. If you wish to be considered for appointment to this year's Beautiful Homes Awards Committee, you are welcome to apply, and we are asking all interested prospective applicants to please provide a written statement of interest setting forth the reasons they wish to be appointed to the committee. They may be mailed to Rachel Mullen at R. Mullen, M-U-L-L-E-N, at UniversityHeights.com, or mailed or dropped off at City Hall. The deadline has been extended this Friday, May 24, 2019. The Memorial Day Parade has over seventy entrants and will prove again to be our largest annual city event, at least so far this year. The parade is at 11:00 a.m. on Memorial Day, and will also be open on Memorial Day. We have the Chicken Keeping Seminar on May 14. Bethany Majewski of the Cleveland Metro Parks, specifically the North Chagrin Nature Center in Louisville Hills, will be presenting her seminar again on Sunday, May 26, at 10:00 a.m. at the North Chagrin Nature Center. I'm aware of at least one University Heights resident who attends, intends to attend that seminar, and I have provided Miss Majewski with the certificate form for our city, for any University Heights residents who attend the seminar this Sunday. This is a reminder for all city employees and members of council that Friday, May 31, to John Carroll University from 10:00 a.m. to 1:15 p.m. is a free public records training. Anyone who handles public records, including the licensed officials, or anyone in the city who has a city email account is encouraged to attend. There will be free CLE hours as well for the lawyers. So, we will be closing City Hall during those hours to allow as many of our employees to attend as possible. You can register in advance at the OhioHunter.gov website in the trainings section. If anyone wants the link, I'm happy to email it to them. Thank you, this concludes my report. First item on the agenda is Item A, Ordinance 2019-23, authorizing the creation of a property management grant program to be administered by the city's Housing and Community Development Department. This is on second reading. Mr. Groden Myers, you have the floor.
Good evening, council. Thank you, Mayor. At the last council meeting, I walked through the details of the proposed property maintenance grant, so I won't belabor the point, but to say that this grant came out of an evaluation of resources that are available to our residents, whether it's through the Heritage Home Program, through various county programs, and we identified an opportunity for the city to be able to do more for our growing population. So, before you tonight is a proposal that would authorize a grant of up to $2,500 with a minimum of 10% match by the homeowner for a grant to do exterior maintenance work on their property, which came as the result of a violation generated by the Housing and Community Development Department. So this would not be something that a homeowner decides to do in addition, or to voluntarily replace things. That would be on the homeowner, but this would be in response to a cited violation. And there are some income guidelines as given by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development's Home Income Program. So, that's just a brief overview. I know that we talked in detail in the last meeting. If there are any questions that we have?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Groden Myers. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Groden Myers? Okay, Mr. Sims?
Unfortunately, I wasn't at the last meeting, and so I don't have a background in public information. But I was just a little curious about the way the information came out. In part, it said that it was a voluntary accommodation to senior citizens, that there is a requirement to ask for the storefront program, and so I just like to leave it at that.
So, I'm not sure how the, I did see in this council packet, the storefront program information's in there. I'm not quite sure. Just a, I think a mix-up of sorts. So, the two, there are two documents that pertain directly to this proposed program. The first one is, it's entitled Property Maintenance Grant Program: Restrictions and Guidelines. So that is just a one-page Word document that details some of the restrictions, the income guidelines, and then the second.
Is that the first document?
They both, they should have both been in your council package.
My computer had the fashion on.
And so, we talked about the income guidelines. What are those?
So, it's based on household size? So I can run through what's the?
Is it poverty? What is it called, poverty? What are we trying to?
It's tied to poverty guidelines as set forth by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. And that's something that's common in some of the other cities that do have these type of grant programs here in the area. It's tied into.
So is it a percent of that?
There are income limits, so it's not a percent of poverty. The income limits are generated out of poverty data. So, I'll just give an example. For a household size of two, the income limit would be $45,250. So if you make that amount or less, you qualify under this grant. So it is designed for low-income families, and then obviously senior citizens who are working on mixed incomes. And that's, both of those are very common scenarios that are, and talk to people on the phone, is that, I understand I've got this violation, but I don't have enough money to do this. And that puts us down this path of either you get a loan, you find money that maybe doesn't exist, and then potentially it puts people in.
So, the senior citizen portion, is that higher income restrictions or minimums associated with senior citizens?
The program is governed by the income limits. So, it's calling out senior citizens as being one population that would be served by this grant, but yes, they would be.
So everybody's subject to the same?
Everybody's held to the same standard. In fact, the grant is $2,500, subject to a project being greater than that first, and that the 10% match, I believe the numbers work out to be about Project, the total project cost is that amount or more, you would qualify for the full $2,500 grant. But it does require a 10% match.
Yes, Mr. Weisman?
Is there a way to get a copy of these now? Do we need to have a copy of few of the guidelines and the information?
I, not many.
So, who would have been about to? So from the last?
From the last packet, here's the application. This is the process and responsibility of the program. And the third page is the required attachments that we provide and the insurance.
I would suggest that any motion clarify which attachments. Because you have a document that came out that has your part of attachments on it. So, that's either an amendment to just some clarified motion.
Hold true means, or whatever the city may choose to do, using that facility, you know, it would institute some set of requirements, so that if this were in place when we designed community park, we fortunately already have berm's and things of that nature built into the community park, but if they weren't part of the proposal initially, we would be held to the standard of having berm, offer fence, landscaping, no less than five feet between the park use and residential use.
Is the transit community park, or the homeless community park, five feet?
It's no less than five feet of that amount. So yes, I believe the berms all along the east side of the park, north side of the park.
You're talking about the height of the fence?
No.
I'm talking about the warning track between the park itself and the fence.
Talking about the distance between, the amount of berm is five.
Between the fence and?
The berms that are in place are in five feet. Trying to create an example, confuse this more so. But suffice to say that what we're trying to do is we're trying to create some separation from the public use and the private use. And in this case, as it's called out in this language, that can be done through landscaping or work. And that fence within.
You're wrong, we don't have that line.
I understand, I understand. That's why I tried.
Well, so, so may I suggest that we get this, like, tomorrow?
I'll say.
Wait until next second.
Thank you, Mr. Weisman. So any further discussion or questions for Mr. Groden Myers? I understand this has been referred, or explained in the emergency, or rather, we already, we're already planning on referring this to the Planning Commission, the Explained Commission meeting. Kelly, what is the date of that meeting?
June 6th.
Right, that would be for recognition. It would be until after the Planning Commission recognition. But you have an attempt. All right, is there anything further for Mr. Groden Myers at this time? I guess there was the first reading. And yes, Mrs. Thomas said, Mr. Groden Myers, if the major council is supplementing the exit. The next item on the agenda is, I think, Ordinance 2019-28, Mindly Codified Ordinance, Section 1620.02, entitled Establishment of Bureau of Fire Prevention to Clarify the Schedule of Non-Residential or Commercial Inspections and to Provide Referral to the City Prosecutor. This is on first reading. Chief Burco, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Notice it's been a long project that the Fire Prevention Bureau's been working on with the law director since the restoration of the bureau. We started taking a hard look at our administrative processes and the ordinances, and wanted to get some things cleaned up and caught up with more current times of code. So this ordinance is a current one. The majority of what you see there is existing language that states that the Division of Fire shall establish a Bureau of Fire Prevention. Really, what we did here was cleaned up and clarified a lot of the language pertaining to our fee and permit structure, and then also added language so that a referral could be made for repeated violations or non-compliance issues to the city prosecutor.
Very good, thank you, Chief Burco. Does anybody have any questions for Chief Burco?
Mr. Rock? Yes, Mayor. What, which part of this was the addition to the existing ordinance? Just the fee part?
Some items in the fee part were additional, some of them were just reorganized. To read a little more cleanly?
Because the, under 1620.02, there's letter A, B, C, D, and then it goes back to A, B, C, D, and G, and J, and then back to D, E, F. So, I don't know if this was pieces, parts that we were adding to this, or is it added?
It's been added a few times.
So it, the way, so it, the way it goes, and I think part of, I'm not exactly sure why it's appearing this way, because I haven't provided this. But, but the numbering is this, it goes D1. It's C, 1602, D1, and then sub A through J.
So those are sublet letters to D1?
And then it's D2. So, got it, okay. And then on to E and F.
So do you know what the addition was? The subletters?
The addition is the subletters, and the purpose was to, as stated by Chief Burco, to get all of the various types of permitting fees into a single location. And then section, sections E and the F are new.
Smaller.
Correct.
Okay.
Small E and small F are new. We have that half. A provision that related to the ability to set one global application when applying for multiple permits. And we also did not have a provision that allowed the fire department to refer businesses that, or other persons who won't comply with a citation or inspection that were onto the prosecutor for potential criminal or simple penalty.
So, on these fees, they'd better be, we talked about the fire hydrant permit, that was going to be $100, right? But now it says 75 is for the deposit. Is that a petition, or is that included?
As long as there's no damage to the hydrant, they're paying $25.
They're paying $25, okay.
Which is consistent with the rest.
So who would use the fire hydrant? This is like the gas line project.
Contractors use it a lot.
Okay.
Demolishing a building, a lot of times, they use a fire hose to keep dust down from the neighborhood.
Okay. So what do you consider damage to the fire hydrant? Like, is the paint chipped off, or?
Most typically, if they shut it down too quickly, it caused a water hammer, and they blew the water main. That's a likely example, because.
Is that more than $700 in damage?
Yeah. But, you know, if they, the caps get, the threads get ruined and things like that, and have to come out and rethread the caps.
Okay. So are we charging enough then? These seems pretty small on the deposit scene, it's not with the color of the potential issue.
This is just consistent with what these guys in the bureau came up with from talking to our fire prevention offices in our area.
What is the permit for hot work? What does that mean?
So if you have, like, a flat roof tar job, there's a permit associated with making sure that they're doing everything compliant so that they don't start to be on fire. There's an safety checklist, so when we come out during an inspection.
So how would you know that there's hot work being performed? Does that go to the building department first?
Yeah, when it goes to the building department, they'll be referred to us to get the hot works permit as well for the fireside, so they can have the safety inspection done.
On the mobile food truck inspection, there's a fee for that. I thought we had something in the past about mobile food trucks. Do you remember? Is this a duplication, or?
We created an ordinance that allowed for registration of food trucks, but I think that we not have the mandatory fire inspection provision within that ordinance. This is just going to, this is meant to implement? Or was it just the fee wasn't checked?
I think the ordinance said if they had an act, you'd have a good policy. Even we credit them with passing that inspection.
But that was for like a health inspection, fire inspection.
I thought it was all inspections.
And I think the fire department expressed an interest to see the truck as part of the permit process, to make sure that they, that everything is safe, but we've had to discuss, and definitely a separate fee. Now, if there's a fee for the food trucks, Mr. McReynolds, generally speaking, in University Heights, do you know?
We've not issued any licenses, to my knowledge, on food trucks.
If I may, Mr. Weisman, there is, there is a permit for fee that we did pass, but we also passed with that, that the fee is waived for food trucks at city-sponsored events. And today, the food trucks we've had have been at the city's invitation at city-sponsored events, so we're not charging a fee. Thank you, Mr. Weisman. Okay. Moving on, on section E, the fee for the witnessing, inspection, testing, and maintenance of all fire protection systems, fire alarm, sprinkler, lid systems, is $25. Is that 25 each for fire alarm, sprinkler, or lid system, or just 25 in total for each system? And we should probably check that, so that that's pretty clear. And then, we talked about the other ones, the safety meeting. I think that was it. Yeah, that was it, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Rock. Any other questions or comments?
Mr. Weisman? Thank you, Mr. Weisman. I just have a general, general point of procedure. If we're, if we're looking at an ordinance and there's already one, and it's a redlined version, I would much prefer for us to get the redlined version because it's, it's really impossible to tell. It's hard to, it's hard to look at something like this and not know what's new and what's old, what are we asking them to vote on, just in the future. I mean, I can see all the margins got all messed up when you try to copy something from one word or dark to another, it gets all messed up. That'll certainly make this an easy one. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weisman. Any questions?
I'm just curious as to, first of all, I had the same question that House Park had about the witnessing, whether that is one inspection or that is a number of inspections. What is a witnessing inspection? What is that?
So the Ohio Fire Code states that there should be a certified fire safety inspector that witnesses the testing of these devices listed here. So as an example, you have a pool station for a fire alarm in a building, and that goes to a fire alarm panel in the building, which is monitored, goes to a fire alarm company. Those need to be tested semi-annually by a certified company. When those companies come out, the authority out of jurisdiction is supposed to have a fire safety inspector witness that testing company to make sure that they're actually testing it properly.
But this is consistent with past practice?
The fee is new, but the witnessing is past practice. When our bureau was.
In the past, we didn't have a fee for.
In the past, we didn't have a fee for doing. The fee for planning a given fire protection system is two hundred dollars. Is that a really big inspection? How do we rate it? Is it so much?
Yeah, it depends on the type of occupancy. Take the mall across the street over there, target large building, multiple stories, many different systems involved, sprinkler system, fire alarm system. It's all tied in with the heating and cooling system so that it shuts down in the event of a fire. So all the different components through all those different systems when that building's being built, in addition to all the plan review that the building commissioner does on his side of things, the fire prevention bureau has to look at all the different safety systems. So a building like that would take months for us to review, whereas in a small town, Mr. Paul, it probably just takes us a couple days or a week.
So this fee is mainly for moving?
Correct.
And then it gets, it looks almost like you're backed down. And I have a similar question about the twelve thousand square feet.
Kind of the same mindset. Bigger building, bigger systems, more time involved, testing, planning, like the same. It's also consistent with the daily communities in our area.
Okay. Because this is likely an inspection. And this is a this is a national inspection as opposed to. So how is that different? In terms of buildings?
Which one?
Looking at E, subletter E, on the D one.
Right. It just goes into the amount of man hours and time. Most of those buildings greater than twelve thousand and have more intricate systems as well.
All right. Then I have a question. If I had to. Hi, I'm Matt. So this is the Bureau. Yeah, I can make a motion if anyone else has any other comments. Okay. I have moved that we adopt the ordinance, authorize the creation of the Property Maintenance Grant Program to be administered by the city's housing development department with the following attachments attached here, too. Number one, the contact information sheet. That's all it says. The program process and responsibility sheet. The University Heights require attachments. It's page three of the same attachment. And the Property Maintenance Grant Program instructions and guideline sheet. Any other motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion on this one? The order received, Mr. Simmons, D needs some time to add the attachments.
No, I just.
Okay. All right. I just wanted to be sure you.
I'm just going to.
Yeah, and and I understand your email now that you had sent because when I saw the email, I thought, I don't understand why he's bringing in storefront renovation. But now I understand completely. Okay. So I'm sorry. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Mrs. Thomas, we call the.
Mr. Brown.
Aye.
Mr. Wisebuck.
Aye.
Mr. Sam.
Aye.
Mr. Earl.
Aye.
Mr. Shannon.
Aye.
Mr. Wisebuck.
Aye. Mrs. Thank you, Mr. Burden. Thank you. Good luck. Item B is Resolution twenty nineteen twenty-five to submit a grant application to the Ohio Department of Natural Resources, ODNR, for funding of the Purvis Park Tennis Courts Reimplantation Project. This is on second reading. Mr. Burden Myers, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. So this grant, the Nature Works Program Grant through ODNR, is something that we regularly apply to. This has been used in the past for the first half of the tennis courts at Purvis Park. We've used it for the playground equipment at a community park or now the mall. And we've also used it as funding to build the Silsby Road neighborhood pocket park that's down closer to Taylor on the south side of Silsby. So here again, we're making application this year for the other half of the Purvis Park Tennis Courts. Those are very frequently used and I hope that the photos have made it into the packet as they did last council meeting. Okay. So in the last packet, they the photos show there's severe pitting on the the old tennis courts or tennis courts that have now been reconstructed that were originally constructed in nineteen sixty-two. And since then, they've just been seal coded and just kind of lightly maintained. So following similar course to the first half of the tennis courts that were reconstructed using ODNR funds, we're seeking funds again to reconstruct the other half of the tennis courts here to bring them in line with the first half of the tennis courts. The city engineer who's not here tonight, unfortunately, he is working on a cost estimate based on previous application. I believe the total project cost was roughly two hundred thousand dollars. And holding that constant, then we will be applying for seventy-five percent of that total project cost, which is what the grant would be seventy-five percent of the total project cost. And if I didn't start with it, it is due to.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Burden Myers, Mr. Burden. And how many of these grants did they give out? It says they've given out two hundred eighty-one thousand in funding for the county. Is that per project or is that just total?
That is total.
Oh.
That is total. So it is competitive and the number of grants varies every year because of the funding. That changes every year. Every county is allocated a certain amount of funds, which is based on population, for sure. So we will be applying, as in years past, they contacted us and said, hey, we're on the cost of being ordered. Would you take a partial rate?
Okay. That was my next question. If they couldn't fully fund it, up to the seventy-five percent, then that just means we have to pay a little bit more moving to partial renovation of the tennis courts.
I would have to check with the city engineer to see if a partial reconstruction would be possible.
Yeah.
But it is probably before we do to the mall, which would mean I'd have to ask for money, right? Should we all come and get back to council, obviously, because of the change in the green funds?
Right.
Which I do. So I would need that somewhere in the past. We have a good shot.
Okay. Very good. Thank you, Mr. Burden. Mr. Burden?
Yes, I was busy. And let me just ask whether or not the other twenty-five percent is covered in budget?
It's not explicitly in there because we did not plan on receiving or applying for a CBT grant at that time. We will have to look in a little more detail as to whether or not we can buy the existing funds or we can imagine whether we have to be willing to add or write a third of the fund. And to clarify, so we would find out about awards roughly September, October of this year. This would not be until we would not start reconstruction until next year. So this would be part of next year's budget.
Would that not be used up for the year? Would that not be used up for the year of next year?
No. So the way we did it for the first half tennis courts, we began construction as early as possible and we were actually able to get it open, I think, right around Memorial Day. Might have been a little bit late. So I think only a couple weeks of play were in that.
Pretty good.
But we made sure to work with the Parks and Recreation Department, made sure they were aware of the timeline and we made that clear in terms of the contract. So we would do the same.
Very good. Thank you. Any further questions, Mr. Burden Myers, or comments? All right. Is there a motion?
So.
Second. Okay. Motion by Mrs. Wise, second by Mr. Burden. Is there any discussion? Oh, yes, this should be on the emergency. Mrs. Wise, may I mention, Gail, on the first.
Thank you.
Oh, we're on second.
Yes, it's on emergency only so that it is effective at the date of writing application.
Okay. Very good. There's no further discussion. Mrs. Wise, we call a roll first on a suspension.
Mr. Brown.
Aye.
Mr. Wisebuck.
Aye.
Mr. Sam.
Aye.
Mr. Burden.
Aye.
Mrs. Shannon.
Aye.
Mr. Wise.
Aye.
Mr. Brown.
Aye.
Mr. Wisebuck.
Aye.
Mr. Burden.
Aye.
You have that on the day motion.
Mr. Brown.
Aye.
Mr. Wisebuck.
Aye.
Mr. Sam.
Aye.
Mr. Burden.
Aye.
Mrs. Shannon.
Aye.
Mr. Wisebuck.
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Next is item C, ordinance twenty nineteen dash twenty-six, enacting codified ordinance section sixteen twenty point zero five entitled Inspection Required Prior to Occupancy. Mandating preoccupancy fire safety inspections for commercial buildings. This is on second reading. Chief Burden, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. Like Mary indicated, this is a second reading about doing preoccupancy inspections on commercial buildings. This is to do fire safety check on all of our safety systems, making sure that the occupancies go compliant before they actually open their doors and become operational and have people inside.
Very good. Are there any questions? We're not asked for, Chief Burden. Okay. Is there a motion?
So.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Sun, second by Mrs. Wise. Is there any further discussion? Seeing on Mrs. Thomas, we call the.
Mr. Burden.
Aye.
Mr. Wisebuck.
Aye.
Mr. Sam.
Aye.
Mr. Burden.
Aye.
Mrs. Shannon.
Aye.
Mr. Wisebuck.
Aye.
Very good. Motion carries. Thank you, Chief. Next is item D, ordinance twenty nineteen dash twenty-seven, enacting codified ordinance chapter twelve sixty-seven of the zoning code entitled Parks and Recreation District. This is on first reading. Mr. Burden Myers, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. As many of you might be aware, Economic Development Director Susan Drucker, planning intern Brent and Zach and myself have been reviewing our zoning code for opportunities to make it a little bit more user-friendly and and just kind of modernizing to the current day needs. And one of the things that is a good practice in the planning field and in zoning is to have something like a Parks and Recreation District. So this would be, at least as this is currently drafted, only for city, state, county, and parks, districts, and properties. So this would involve all the city properties here in the city and it would govern the both eligible uses or permitted uses and accessory uses as outlined in the zoning district language as well as institute buffering requirements, which have not been the case in the past because currently our parks are in U one zoning districts and operate as permitted use. So there are no buffering requirements in current municipal parks. So part of this is just setting a standard that we would like to hold ourselves to, saying that we really are designing parks that would be focused on outdoor facilities, whether that's playfields or playgrounds and things like recreational courts, tennis courts, volleyball courts, things of that nature. But accessory uses like pavilions, restaurants, storage facilities, would have to go through planning commission. Essentially, we're trying to hold ourselves to a higher standard for this, as well as including buffering requirements, which say that permitted uses and accessory uses within a Parks and Recreation District, property shall have no less than five feet of landscaping per offense when ordering a residential zoning district. So again, trying to bear in mind that we're creating a public use next to a private residential use.
Yes, thank you. So currently, do we have the buffers in place for all of our, for all of these zones that you?
No. So it is not consistent throughout the city's parks.
So so Purvis is consistent probably throughout?
Purvis, for the most part, yes. But but so to bear in mind with zoning, current uses are grandfathered or current current layouts and things of that nature. We would be held to this new standard.
That was before I was leading to.
When when we would be doing a reconstruction or a a new park or something of that nature.
Any existing program or structure would be grandfathered?
Okay. And then, you know, I just forgot your nose how I feel about the zoning code being updated. And I just, you know, it's just a little bothersome that we have to piece in all this as opposed to doing the whole thing, you know, together. So that's just another another reason why we need the zoning code updated.
Understood. Appreciate and respect your position. Agree with it, except to the point where I do support it, Mr. Burden. Mr. Burden? Yes, Mayor. And I support the rezoning or rebacking of the zoning code in its entirety as well. So I do support that. This is the ordinance that I'm looking at in my packet here, but what about the zoning regulations? I don't have that in the packet, like everything that goes with this particular district. Did you provide a part of this packet?
Yes. So the language actually documenting the meat of the the chapter, meaning it's got sections on purpose, destination, permitted, and accessory uses.
I don't have buffering requirements. I've seen it, but I don't have it right in front of me. This is first reading.
I have to go up.
It's a first reading, so we may make a decision today. Thank you, Mr. Burden, Mr. Wisebuck.
Yeah, I'm assuming that's the exhibit A that you're asking about, Mr. Burden.
Yeah.
So which properties in the city does this cover now?
Yeah.
Meaning, cover which properties?
This would cover Purvis, Pool, and Tennis Courts. It covers this Silsby Road, Neighborhood Park, the Pocket Park that's down on that just east of Parkland on Silsby, and it would include Community Park.
So this is going to cover all just things owned by the city?
Correct.
And the practical effect will be?
That in considering projects and and changes to each of those parks going forward or any potential parcel that we might consider rezoning to a Parks and Recreation District would have to be consistent with this language.
I just want to add to that, that by virtue of enacting the codified ordinances, this section of the zoning code, that does not automatically change the various arc and to the zoning. That'll have to happen through a separate rezoning of those particular parcels. So that'll have to go through planning commission. Essentially, essentially, it's a change in the zoning map of the city.
So I mean, Mike, since we don't have the language here in front of us, I don't I just don't know what this does.
So like I said, this is essentially holding us to a higher standard so that we can't just put a pavilion because it's city-owned land, we can't just go and put a pavilion next to a residential storage. Because obviously, that has certain public use associated with it, whether it's, you know, the creation of noise through vans or.
Someone fails to pass an inspection, may be subject to criminal or civil citation. And then refers to the ordinance. So my question is, first part is, the failure to pass an inspection may be subject. So how do we decide whether it's going to be subject to what to your prosecution?
So I can answer that question. First, let me point out that at present, sixteen oh two ninety-nine, which is the referenced penalty provision, does not exist. We don't have any penalty provisions out of code that relate to fire inspections, which is one of the difficulties that the fire department's had. We have an ordinance that we're working on that I think you'll see on your next agenda that will establish the penalty structure. agenda that'll establish the, um, penalty structure. And in the initial draft, um, the way the penalty structure works is that there are, um, civil penalties that escalate, um, as inspections go on and if they're not compliant with the overall work. Um, and it's only after a fourth, um, citation where, um, a party has ignored, um, the remedial action that they're being asked to take, that they would be, um, eligible to be referred to the prosecutor for a misdemeanor. So it, it's a lenient, um, penalty, um, construct, if you will. Um, but we did want to ultimately include a criminal, um, aspect so that, um, the fire department's not going to, currently, which is issuing multiple citations and coming back over and over again without any, um, progress.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Are there any further questions or comments? There are none. We would consider this the, plus, Mr. G, you have any further comment? We consider this the first reading.
Thank you. Is this something we need to first? Well, we have a safety meeting tomorrow.
Yeah, it's fine. We have a meeting tomorrow.
We were going over a few other ordinances, but- Okay, the next item on the agenda is item F, motion to accept and enter into contract for twenty nineteen General Yard Nuisance Abatement Program. Mr. Buckmeyer, here the question.
Thank you, Mayor. Last Friday, we opened bids for the twenty nineteen General Yard Nuisance Abatement Program. Generally, this is, uh, the contractor who comes out for when there's tall grass, uh, when your grass is higher than eight inches.
I'm not familiar.
So, so, uh, thankfully, uh, unfortunately, we, we got the bid out, um, or the RFP out a little bit later than we had hoped, but we did receive two bids, uh, in response to that RFP. And, um, as you, hopefully as in your council packet, uh, there is a recommendation, a board letter, um, that I drafted, which included both bids, um, for their, their bid amounts for grass, the trimming shrubs, leaf cleanout, and debris removal. And so we're recommending a, a award to top level lawn service LLC, um, the RA and MBE eligible company. So, that is who we're awarding. They propose a grass rate of twenty-five dollars per property. And that's my part of the lowest use of our nuisance abatement contractor is for high grass.
A little early for the high shrubs?
Yes.
Any questions for, 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 Mr. Weisman?
Mr. Mayor, I, I do not have this item in my council.
Yeah. I have one copy, which I just passed to Mr. Erdel, which also might be sent out. Yes, 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 I have this.
Yes, Mr. Sebbs. Well, I don't really have a question. Well, I do have a question, but, uh, also have, um, I want to recommend the city on this app. I spend a lot of time there, on this council. I want to see trees, and I want to see the lawns cut. And, uh, I don't know what happened this year, but these prices are impressive. Both companies, and the only company was significantly higher than the other company, but both companies were very competitive. So I'm glad to see this. I'm also happy that, and I didn't know this, the top level lawn service is a MBE.
Actually, both companies are MBE eligible, so-
Okay. That's good too. That's, that's very good. That's excellent, in fact. So, uh, a question that I would have, and I don't know that we need an answer right now at this point, but we have previously established a fee for what the city charges to undertake, uh, these, um, these nuisance abaintments. And, and part, I think, that what we charged in the past was reflective of what we were, what we were charged in the past. So I just want to see what kind of schedule of, of, of abatement charge are we going to have going forward.
Well, the, the ordinance provides for fines in addition to the cost of, of the, of the yard abaintments.
Got you.
So while there may be an, passing along savings to the homeowner, um, there is still a fine structure. So, um, that, that could not be changing.
But, yeah, and I said I wasn't suggesting changing, but I know that that would be a question.
It, it's under chapter ten eighty-four, um, in abatement by the city, we can assess the cost of the abatement itself, so that's the proposed twenty-five dollars under this, uh, bid. But it also includes a penalty of a hundred dollars for the first offense, and two hundred dollars for the second offense and all others thereafter.
Okay.
Can this company cut the number of loans that would be cut?
Yes.
Very good. Any other questions, Mr. Buckmeyer, comments? I understand, yeah. I have twenty-one loans that need to be, anyway, please.
It has.
All right. Is there a motion?
Top level lawn service.
There's a second?
Second.
The motion by Mr. Sun, second by Mr. Erdel, is there any further discussion? Seeing that Mrs. Thomas, we call the roll.
Mr. Bass?
Aye.
Mr. Weisman?
Aye.
Mr. Sims?
Aye.
Mr. Erdel?
Aye.
Mrs. Cannon? Aye.
Mrs. Weiss?
Aye.
Mr. Sims?
Aye.
Mrs. Cannon? Aye.
Mrs. Weiss?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Buckmeyer. Okay, next item on the agenda is a motion to accept and enter into contract C T L engineering for the construction management of the Lawrenceville Center mid-block crossing and bike lane project. This is item G on the agenda. Mr. Juney is at a charity event this evening, uh, but I do have a note from him on this matter, the next matter, and also his general report. So five eighty, which is been on, uh, item G. The Lawrenceville Center mid-block crossings and bike lane project has no lack of local project administration funding, and a requirement of the grant funding is that the design engineer cannot perform the construction administration slash construction inspections reviewed as C A C nine. Since G P D group performed, the design engineer and other consultant must perform the C I, rather than the C A C I. The city sent a letter request for proposal to five local consultants pre-qualified by ODOT to perform C A C I work. Two proposals were received. Mr. Corney and Mr. Juney reviewed the responses, and they are recommending C T L engineering as the most qualified. C T L submitted hourly rates for their services, and they are reasonable and fair. Once we have the contractor's schedule, we will be able to determine the C A C I fee, which I anticipate I made, Mr. Juney, to be twenty-five thousand to thirty thousand dollars. In your packet, it should be a letter of May fourteen regarding to the mid-block crossing construction administration and inspection. Any questions, Mr. Rock?
Yes, Mayor, so I heard your letter, uh, from the city engineer. Why, why is it though that the city engineer, uh, cannot perform the C A, the C I duty? Because they, the designer doesn't understand?
Well, it's, it's, it's a, it's part of the grant. It's a requirement from, from the particular source of this grant fund that they can't have the same engineer that is the design engineer, and it's also the group of engineers, the design engineers work. That's considered a conflict for some reason in this project.
Oh, so that's a condition of the grant, not the city?
Correct.
Okay, so I was going to say, it's designed for us to perform the C I services, so that's what stood out. So, um, was, uh, the city engineers group compensated for the design? So how much, do you know?
Uh, I think, uh, they should have been, uh, do you know?
I don't have that.
They were ours, though, right? I think so.
They, they were, they have been compensated for that. When we get invoices from their firm, G P D, uh, they do use different invoice codes for different projects, and in, uh, Lawrenceville Center mid-block, uh, block crossing has been part of design work throughout billing codes. Um, I'd have to dig through our records, or G P D probably can provide us more quickly with a consolidated list of what they bill us for that. Uh, so if it's not readily available, what we pay, and we have paid for engineering services for that project.
Okay, 'cause I'm curious about that. Um, just for the sake of, uh, percentage of construction costs in terms of construction administration, it's usually benchmarked by twenty percent of the overall design fee, so I just wanted to see if it was aligned with what we're paying in design fees. Um, do we have a, uh, amount of site visits that are going to perform for this, uh, the C I services?
I do not have that.
Curious, you know, if they're going weekly, once a month, bi-weekly?
It says, you know, in the letter that's in the packet, the total fee for the assignment of the contractor's schedule, since the inspector has to be present every hour the contractor is on site.
Oh, so it's forty hours a week?
Sounds like they'd be there for the long haul.
Wow. That was a condition of the grant as well?
Must have been.
It's a standard. So if we were to pass this, then what do we give as terms of benchmark? Is it a range fee? Is it an anticipated fee? Do we have an exact number to exceed the, the thirty then?
Well, Mr. Juney anticipates that we will be twenty-five to thirty thousand dollars. Um, I, I would ask that, that we would go on the high end of that, that Mr. Juney, Mr. Corney was like yourself.
Yeah, I mean, if you, if you establish a map to exceed, uh, I'm looking to exceed that for a fact.
Of course, if they have to be there every hour of the construction, then it's potentially a delay or, or, or a urgency meeting.
How much was the grant for?
Matter, do you have that number?
This is, this is for one hundred thousand.
One hundred thousand? On a mid-block crossing?
Correct.
For some reason, I want to save like fifty of the dollars.
And go with it, that's my answer. A hundred, a hundred thousand dollars in federal fund to a lack of, for this project.
Okay.
So we're paying a twenty-five percent markup to get a grant for a hundred thousand dollars. Paying at least twenty-five thousand dollars to a fee in an outside place to get their hundred.
Well, well, I think G P D would charge it as something, but with the twenty-five to thirty thousand dollars, I think.
I would assume they would be there for the forty hours.
Probably not.
No.
Then there's that, yes.
So, but did we have a match to this hundred thousand already?
Our, our natural hundred thousand is being the rest of the possible part.
Okay, so it's the balance of the project. We have to include this fee.
Yes.
Project, what, what is the project costing so far?
Give me a moment to look at your file here. The construction cost that we had budgeted, um, was two hundred sixty-four thousand nine hundred seventy dollars, and I believe that was when it was, ended up being adjusted construction costs. Uh, previous engineering costs we paid in prior year, I do not have a dollar amount for that that would come out of the operating budget for the city engineer, and then this money would be coming out of the operating budget for the city engineer as well.
Thank you, Mrs. Weiss.
I guess, so the city's paying right now one sixty-four, because the grant was only for one hundred, right?
Yeah, the grant was one hundred, I believe. When we had last completed the bid openings, it came in just slightly under, but you have to have regulation, real budget, on the merit.
That sounds nice.
I recall that as well.
I don't have that number, nothing to talk about.
Does this have to be for time, or do we wait till, Mr. Juney?
It could wait, but it's a project. I think this is the last thing they were waiting for, before they began scheduling. But I'm gratifying Mr. Juney is back. I certainly respect him.
Mr. Rock, let me just continue on. I, I, I support this project. I was on the WACO, went through these projects, and I'm very excited about the project, but if we're already invested a hundred sixty-four thousand and add another thirty, then I'm very thankful that the WACO or the federal grant is available to us, but it's such a small portion now of what the project costs has become, that I don't see why we couldn't appeal the, uh, requirement for the onsite inspection and construction administration of what could be forty hours a week. I mean, we're, we're paying two-thirds of the bill, we should have a, a right to appeal that requirement.
That, that would be something we probably need to discuss with, uh, engineer, uh, Juney. Something, because I'm not familiar enough with this particular grant, know only your requirements for this one.
Thank you. Mr. Sebbs?
My question is, is this, is this a blockhead project, or are you putting, um, these little things out there and then making crosswalks?
It's, it's the mid-block crossing project where there, there would be two mid-block crossings and a Lawrenceville Center. I'd have to go back and look at the map as to where exactly they are, but, but Lawrenceville Center is roughly one mile within our city, and they're both south of City Hall, north of Fairmont Circle. Um, there would be a crosswalk, a, a pedestrian island where pedestrians can park to, if you want to take refuge from the traffic before proceeding across the rest of the way. Uh, this also includes the bicycle lanes that would go the length of the equine line of Lawrenceville Center, which is in University Heights. So basically, we're talking about two pedestrian islands, uh, and, and a restriping, uh, as well as all of the new signage that, um, that is part of the pedestrian.
So it does require parking?
It does require parking. It does require limited hall parking, but it's parking in block areas, and also it's parking on one side of the street, and on one side, which is more like the rest of the streets of the city, which traditionally would have parking on this.
Mayor, can I-
Yes.
So, so as far as the reason for the, the split between the two engineering firms, this is not a condition of the WACO or, this is a condition of ODOT. ODOT is, um, because Lawrenceville is, I believe, is the National Highway Lit Registered, um, and a county road, I believe, is where the conditions that required us to then have to put our plans through ODOT for ODOT's approval, and also have to then work by ODOT's regulations. ODOT requires that the engineering firms for design, construction, administration be two separate firms.
And I get that, but it's, does ODOT also require an engineer to be there onsite forty hours a week? Why should someone pay minds?
They, they, they have-
Seems excessive.
They have very stringent requirements when it comes to actual administrative project. So a, a lot of this is bound as part of ODOT's regulations.
So, Mayor?
Yes. Are you done?
I'm done. Okay.
I, I kind of agree with you, but the only, the only, um, question- I mean, I, I kinda agree with you, but the only, the only, um, question on your ability is whether, uh, the, the, okay, would, uh, charge any less than this one, you know, I should have paid.
Oh, 'cause it'd be forty hours a week, so it would probably be the same, right? I, I just disagree with the, the fact that it's, and it's like, who's gonna send a trailer for forty hours, times how many weeks, to review the concrete bump out, which you can review when it's all poured, like that?
Except that if it's wrong, then the engineer's telling them to take it all off, or...
But that's at the contractor's expense, because it's not built towards the specs and the, and the forms of the drawings. It's, it's not a typical standard of care for an engineer to be onsite for that excessive amount of time to, and I don't even like the word inspection, uh, to inspect a contractor's work, that's not the, the standard of care or profession. That's, that's just my, and we're paying for that.
I don't know the warranty position to change it, so that's...
That's why I was wondering if there was an appeal process, because we're the major player in the cost of this project.
And this project came to us, uh...
Uh, it was here when I got here, and this is a project that's been ongoing for some time. Uh, I did direct some modifications to it, the addition of the bike lanes primarily, but the, uh, but the, uh, pedestrian islands was something that was in the works, and that was by Noacka, uh, prior to my, uh, administrative...
Yeah, I got a recovery, yeah. But we had a grant to, 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 yeah.
The, the addition of the bike lanes was something that caused ODOT to spend considerable time reviewing the project once more. Plus, moving the project out by a year, which I, I anticipate in time, but at the same time, all four reasons why, I wanna be sure the bike lanes are, in fact, the project does proceed, you know, according...
Do you have the timeframe of actually starting to finish the...
I don't have that information. Okay, we've motioned by, this is my, Mr. Samson, is there any further discussion?
Mr. Wilson? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, to, to Mr. Rogers' point, uh, I, I think it would be helpful or relief if the administration would at least attempt to contact ODOT and say something on the lines of, give us a break, this is not even really a construction project we're talking about. My guess is that ODOT's requirement has to do with people tearing up their roads and looking back in the way that ODOT doesn't like, and if we were to say that, uh, look, we're bumping out a curb or a line, whatever their answer, their answer is, you know, I mean, albeit extremely unlikely scenario that, uh, that, please, we're trying to sort of, not only possibly...
I can say ODOT gave me a break ever since they laid the project into the next year. This, this project should have been built last year, and it's sold to ODOT's fault that it's not. So, you know, I don't really, well, I, I have done my fair sharing at ODOT already, yelling at ODOT already, and, and, um, and, and here we are a year later without the project, a year and a half later without the project.
I apologize for not really realizing the extent towards the administration of our taking up this frustration.
No, I mean, I'm telling you...
We share your pain at this point.
Yeah, I, I'm still trying to figure out where the restroom is, and Mr. Trudy's in my office saying, here's this project. And I said, where are the bike lanes? He said, the previous mayor didn't care about bike lanes, and I said, well, I do, so let's put some in. Is that gonna delay the project? He goes, nah, probably not that long. And here we are a year and a half later, 'cause ODOT looked at the bike lanes and apparently had some issues, and we worked it all out. But, uh, it, you know, that's, that's more of an ODOT. And, and, and... Well, I'm just happy they came back to plan though. But at the same time, your, your points won't take, um, you know, why do we have to pay for this? So we're really, as we said, we have to stop to take a vote, don't we?
Yes.
Is there any further discussion?
That was the discussion.
Great, thank you. Mrs. Thomas, we call rule.
Pass.
Pass.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Samson?
Aye.
Mr. Riddle?
Aye.
Mrs. Hammond?
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss?
Aye.
Very good motion, Trudy.
Thanks.
All right. Motion to accept, this is letter H, motion to accept entered contract of Midwest Parking Lot Maintenance LLC for the 2019-2021 pavement paving program. Okay, um, this is the contract for street striping and pavement markings, we once again participated in a joint bid with Shaker Heights for these services. Shaker Heights put together the bid specs and opened the bids, giving Shaker Heights hour quantities and hour requirements, which were included in the bid. This contract is a three-year contract, but only the first year is guaranteed. It is our option to renew year two and three, uh, depending on the performance of the contract. The low bidder is Midwest Parking Lot Maintenance LLC, and Shaker Heights has already entered into a contract with Midwest for their portion of the project. I am familiar with the work of Midwest, and I am recommending the city enter into a contract with Midwest for this project. So, as you may recall, uh, we previously bid with Shaker Heights, uh, for the previous, uh, street striping and pavement markings. Uh, this bid is in line with what we did before, difference this time being that, uh, after, after Shaker did all its, uh, did, did bidding and did the heavy lifting for us, uh, they did split out the required contracts in two, uh, and this is something where, while references are made throughout this agreement to the Shaker Heights acceptance of bid and, and, and other forms, there are two separate agreements for simplicity, so that Shaker can get, uh, their work going first, which traditionally they would have theirs done first anyway, and then ours would be second, so they've already fully executed their contract, and this will be, uh, presumably approved and ready to go for when they're ready to begin our work here to the first of us. Mrs. Wilson?
So is, just for clarification?
Yeah.
Is this not, we, in three years, they're gonna do all of the streets, there are business streets, there's some number streets this year, because none of the streets are...
Mayor, excuse me? Yes, Chief Rogers, I hope there is a document that you could...
So historically, this type of service, um, for line strapping is a three-year contract. Uh, this is the beginning of the first year of this three-year contract. Yeah, the numbers provided, uh, acknowledge just for the first year, forty-four thousand five hundred eighty-five dollars, and then subsequent years, but they do all line strapping each year.
The entire city will be done?
The entire city will be done every year, as it historically has been done. It's just, uh, for your contract, it's typical, this type of...
Can you start me that?
Yes.
Yeah, if you, if you look at this, for instance, uh, just at the, in the, the hashed out block in front of the firehouse, that was just made in last year, when we paved Silsby, it's already half worn off. Uh, and that's with the harshest part of the, it's apparently just something that, that happens, uh, in us, every major...
Further, a lot of the work is contingent on the weather. You can take, uh, contractor, in this case Midwest, double weeks or a month, plus, you can Shaker Heights done, which they have obviously a lot more, line striking, they do. Um, and then last year, they finished their, their project, and less than a lot of people live for that weather. Uh, but in the contract, it does acknowledge that the work shall be completed by August, and the full sticks will now be free here.
Thank you, Chief Rogers. Any further questions you have?
Sure, I, so I just wanted to, uh, follow that the amount of the contract is four-four thousand, is that what you're saying?
For the first year. Uh, subsequent years, which are identified in the contract as well, uh, year two is forty-five thousand five hundred fifty-two, and year three is forty-six thousand four hundred twenty-nine.
Okay, and then our ability to decide whether we're gonna do any of it any year will be, uh, at our discretion?
Correct.
And every line in this city is only...
Yes, it's specked out in the, uh, the bid for the contract, which I believe should be part of your...
Okay, I mean, I just, that's amazing, I didn't, I didn't realize you'd take it every line.
Yeah, at some point, um, again, Joe Trudy would have more information, but there was, um, calculations done to, to determine the exact linear fee that's required for this project, and it gets added to as, you know, things change in the city.
And that's like down, build board, down trade board, down no board, every single strike?
Yep.
It's pretty good, but... Yeah, there's a crosswalks to it, right? The tall ass bars and everything.
Actually have, if you guys wanna pass it around, I have, um, all of the calculations and different types of markings.
Yes. Striking, which is a little hard, so, is why the school, is that, I know that they have strapping here and that, is this something doing, or is this school just...
I believe that would be the school's responsibility.
So there's probably less, in a little, there's probably less strapping on the street now, where, so, it's not for the school crossing?
That's a good question.
Yeah, I would assume it's part of the original specs, um, until we know for certain that what the, the future is of the school building, it's going to be. If it's not an everyday school, would it be some type of, um, utilization that would require to a college, school crossings? I don't know if that's been confirmed yet.
Yeah, I don't know if that's been confirmed yet, for purposes of this...
I think it would be a nominal change, if it wasn't found there. It is, as the, uh, the contract progresses in year ten and three, we, uh, we bring work, um, needs to get the contractor's attention. If something is changed or modified that doesn't need, uh, typical, um, line striking, then, then we'll bring it to the contractor's attention. There's, you reflect it, you're pricing it here.
Makes sense. Is there a motion?
I have a question.
Yes, Mr. Rogers.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chief, are you the liaison for the strapping guys, or is it, you didn't put any, Mr. Trudy?
I have specific questions, but I don't want to labor either with them.
Um, that responsibility has changed over the years, I think right now, I'm, I guess I'm the liaison.
Okay, all right, so, uh, so, here you go. Last year, it's either the intersection at Silsby and Groveland, or Silsby and, Silsby and Milton, or Groveland and Milton, uh, it rained a day after they struck, and it looked absolutely horrible the next day. Cars ran over it, and it tracked, and it was, it was, I was surprised they cleaned it, 'cause it, that's why they, 'cause it was gonna rain all day, and they painted it, they probably wanted to get it in, but it just looked absolutely horrible, and, uh, I, I, I don't know what our mechanism is for calling them back, having them fix that kind of stuff.
Well, we have a mechanism in place for quality control purposes, where we have a lieutenant, uh, that works Monday to Friday, as well as our assigned shop employee that periodically goes out, especially when, when they're in, in the middle of the project, will go out on a daily basis to confirm the work that's done, uh, also feel complaints, that sometimes come in from residents or council members, um, about something that wasn't, uh, done to, to the level of expectation that we have. Um, and when we feel those complaints, and we provide them to the contractor, uh, those punch lists have to be completed before payment issue.
And, uh, it has been, it has been, every year, I get a call from a resident who was booked it up at four in the morning because they were strapping, and he didn't know they were strapping, and left his windows open, and there's guys outside his window, you know, having a conversation, is, is there any way to let the residents know which neighborhood will be striked before it happens, so they know, this is not tonight, get my windows open?
I think we try to coordinate with them to provide a, um, you know, a, a window that they'll be working in a certain area with some reasonable time in advance.
Yeah, it'd be great, any, anything you can do, even the signs, you know, they hang the signs that say hydrant flushing this week, even something in the street or something, you know, like, you can imagine what happens, right? You know, the summer night, those, those are crew guys, they're, you know, unexpected.
Again, similar with the gas line replacement project on, um, the southwest area of the city. We're, we're getting the updates, the progress, and where they would be the following week. Also, built into this contract acknowledges that excessive noise will not be tolerated, um, that's beyond just the, the normal work. And we have feel the complaints in the past about noise in radios in the middle of the night, and we do a lot of trust those.
You know how it is, at night, there's nothing going on, so even a regular conversation carries. I don't know, one guy's excessive noise is the other guy's, you know, regular conversation. But I, I appreciate any opportunity. Also, if I'm driving north on Green Road, and I turn left into Main Street, which is Baintree, there's a sign that says, do not block intersection, for people stopping at the light board going south on Green Road. And every human being alive ignores that sign, and I have to either wait till the light turns green, and then I've got people coming the other way behind me to turn left on Main Street, or I have to go in and almost hit people. So if they could sort of paint a line there, some kind of hash mark or something, I don't know, uh, that lets people know that this is where you're not supposed to park, that would probably help.
We'll look into that also, we'll hope some resources minor the area in detail, to, to get some attention.
I don't know how many people turn left on Baintree, it's not more than fifty, unfortunately, but, you know, it's, it's really, it makes it kind of hard to turn, 'cause one, once the traffic starts going, then I'm, I've gotta come in both ways.
Is it the left tree out of Baintree, or left turn out of Baintree?
No, that would be illegal, Mr. Mayor.
That's why I thought...
I'm driving north, north on Green Road towards here, I'm taking a left at two Baintrees, so don't block, but everybody blocked.
It's a bad intersection, so I can, I can, I can block that.
And worse is the construction.
I can't detect that it's any, I'm just saying that if there were maybe some markings there on the road, people might have.
Anything like a box on the outside of there?
Maybe not something that serious, but yes.
Because they still stop on them.
Perhaps if I had a badge and the ability to ticket people, that stuff, that kind of stuff.
Scary dog.
We'll get somebody down with this.
Thank you, Chief, I appreciate it. I know you have a lot of play there, I appreciate you both taking it. Thank you.
You got a lot of the box there just like-
That's right.
I'm not making it high here though, that is a, that is a concern and I have seen what you're talking about. Are there any further, I have a motion. Do you like to make a motion? So.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Erdel, second by Mrs. Cameron. This will be the motion, is it accepted under the contract of Midwest Parking Lot Maintenance LLC for the 2019-2021 Payment Parking Program. Is there any further discussion? Saved on Mrs. Thomas, we call.
Mr. Ratt?
Aye.
Mr. Wiesman?
Aye.
Mr. Sands?
Aye.
Mr. Erdel?
Aye.
Mrs. Cameron?
Aye.
Mr. Wise?
Aye.
Very good motion carries. Next is item I, wardens 2019-29, authorizing the mayor to enter into animal service agreement with ANS Animal Control on Emergency. Chief?
Thank you, Mayor. Council, the agreement before you for animal control service with ANS, I'd first like to provide a little background on the city's historical animal control service. For about the last 20 years, South Eagle's Service Department has provided animal control services to the city. This past March, specifically March 25th, South Eagle's Service Department notified me that they can no longer provide the same historical services to the city due to resource issues on their end. They did acknowledge they haven't continued to provide emergency services in the meantime. So I reached out to neighboring communities to see who they were using pretty much and I determined that a private company called ANS has provided comprehensive animal control service to this, to the majority of this region, region for the last 30 years. Prior to the name ANS, they were known as Pepperidge Cows. So they've been in this area for, for about 30 years now, but they do provide comprehensive service to the majority of this region. Feedback from those communities that use ANS has been very positive and ANS is highly regarded by those municipalities. The service fees for ANS are comparable to what South Eagle was charging us and in some cases it's much less than what South Eagle was charging us. An example of that would be for an emergency type animal service call where South Eagle would charge us a four-hour minimum, which equals approximately a hundred and sixty dollars and ANS would charge us seventy-five dollars going forward for the same emergency type service call. One thing that is different with this, with ANS is they do have a $425 monthly retainer, which comes out to fifteen, one hundred dollars annually. What this does though is guarantee 24/7 availability and priority for animal control service for our city, which is something that we have not had in the last 20 years. ANS does provide a more comprehensive service to the community than previous services and this does include private property assistance inside of residences. The hypothetical situation where a raccoon or a possum or a squirrel gets into a living space in a house, they will come out and begin to assist with where previous services would not. Situations that involve sick or injured cats or found kittens, ANS will also assist with that type of service call where historically that was not a service that would be accommodated. So at this time, I respectfully request council to authorize entering into a provided, into the provided service agreement with ANS Animal Control for the term of May 1st, 2019 through April 30th, 2020, in an amount not to exceed seven thousand five hundred dollars in service fees and subject to the terms identified in this agreement.
Very good, thank you, Chief Rogers. Mrs. Thomas?
I was very excited to see this on the agenda and I was actually curious what it covers and I am so happy with some of the examples that you said because South Eagle if they come out at all would be, would be a good thing. Many, many residents call me, there's a intruder in their backyard, what do they do? There's cats in their backyard, what do they do? Sick cat, I mean, like the list, there's a dead apple on my street, I mean, it'd go on and on and on. And even there was, one of my neighbor's houses, a raccoon on the garage and South Eagle just is not happening. So I, this is, this is a really like, a true medical service I would finally offer or as a, during an extensive, so I'm excited for this. Do you have any other examples of what, what this can cover or?
Well, I've looked through some more examples. Trapping, which is, is kind of different than what our previous animal service provided. South Eagle would just respond to the area and charge us hourly for trapping, whether it was on a phone call, setting the traps, checking the traps, removing animals. This price that's included through ANS is a hundred and twenty dollars per location that covers everything. So the situation where somebody would call in a complaint about skunks or some type of animal either in their yard or under their deck, ANS would respond to and before they would actually charge the city now, set traps, they would coach and inform the resident how to resolve the actual problem. So the situation where somebody has a deck that's not properly closed all the way around it and there was access under the deck that, that they haven't fixed yet, this animal warden will, will coach them and make sure they're, they're doing their diligence to fix the problem instead of us just paying to treat the symptoms.
Does it have any, what do they do in terms of, in terms of feral cats?
Again, they'll, they'll pick up sick or injured cats. There's sometimes, there's only so much you can do, they know they coordinate with the APL. They also, for certain types of cats and kittens, will, will take effort upon themselves to, to post on social media platforms to try to reach out to the community in this region to try to place kittens that, that would be candidates or cats that would be tested.